Good evening. Welcome to the City of Rye Planning Commission meeting for September 9, 2025. One hearing this evening, which will be here, and it'll be a public hearing. After that, we will adjourn to the conference room, and it'll be a public meeting, and we will notice each item on the agenda as it comes up. The work section portion for the Osborne will have here as well rather than relocating. Okay, so, public hearing number one, or the only public hearing this evening, is 101 Theol Road. Site plan SP 415, steep slope SS 007, and tree removal TR 010. Mr. Rabel, are you here for the applicant?
I am. So, good evening, everyone. For the record, my name's Steven-
Oh, excuse me. Before going further, I just need to notify everyone that this is being recorded.
Thank you. So, again, for the record, my name is Steven Rabel. I'm with the Law for McCullough, Goldberger, and Stout, here tonight on behalf of the Miriam Osborne Memorial Home Association, owner and operator of 101 Theol Road. Tonight, in addition to myself, you'll hear from Matt Anderson, president and CEO, Andrew Tung, our civil engineer from DTS Providence, Caroline Warlick Levens from Byer Blinder Bell, our architectural firm, and Robert Gold, our landscape architect from Towers Goldie. So, before I get into my portion of it, Matt Anderson, on behalf of the Osborne, wanted to give a brief statement to the commission, and then you'll hear from me again.
That's fine.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Planning Commission members and also members of the community. I'm Matthew Anderson. I'm the president and CEO of the Osborne. I'm also a Rye resident here in Rye. I've lived here for 27 years. The Osborne's a nonprofit senior living provider. We've been around since 1908. We're actually one of the most preeminent senior living communities in the country. We've been providing both independent assisted living, memory care, skilled care, and home care to not only 430 people that live on our campus, but about another 600 that come through our skilled nursing facility and another 500 throughout the local community. One thing that I've always treasured about the Osborne and its time is that it's always been able to evolve as an organization through times when it hasn't been able to actually evolve, which was back in the 60s. It actually had to sell off a lot of land. That land, for all intents and purposes, was the land across the street where you see corporate buildings and everything these days. And the Osborne, not wanting to get into those positions in the future, is looking at where we need to be going forward. That last time that we did that, again, was Pathway 2000, over 25 years ago. Since that time, as a lot has gone ahead and changed. We have the baby boomers who are coming. Their wants and desires are different than the wants and desires of seniors that are at the Osborne today. But also, there's a lot that our current seniors at the Osborne want and desire. And what we're finding is with the increased competition that has entered the area, that the Osborne needs to modernize. It needs to do some things to become more effective in the future. First thing is changing our mix in our organization. Right now, we're 52% independent living to 48% healthcare. That's not what you build senior living organizations at today, going forward. It's more of a 70% independent living to 30% healthcare. The reason is technology, home care, the ability and desire and want to actually live independently within one's home. So, the Osborne's really trying to make an effort to try to move in that direction, to be able to be successful financially into the future, as those desires and needs want to be met. On campus, when we've looked at this, a lot of the things in discussing with our residents is about our amenity space, the lack of some of the amenity space, the need to modernize. That means new dining venues. It means meeting space. We have a lack of meeting space at our organization for the residents when we do all of these activities, such as lifelong learning and other things. Proximity is a big issue for these different functions, and as you see, when we get into site plan, a lot of the buildings will move closer to the independent living population to allow the ability to continue to walk and get around our buildings and get to things easily. Our average age of our independent living residents right now is 89, so you can imagine trying to get to those spots sometimes becomes a little bit difficult, walking from one end of the campus to the other end of the campus to get to our auditorium. So, in this process, we also look at modernizing our assisted living. Our assisted living units right now, about 450 square feet. We need to make those larger. They need to look like independent living units. So, you'll see in this plans that we have plans for a new assisted living building. Again, that's to meet the new wants and desires of these seniors as they move forward. That also gives us the opportunity to go ahead and modernize our legacy building, something that we've wanted to go ahead and do and move into independent, which was originally. So, this plan, as we've gone through it over the last, you know, several years since the Planning Commission, continues to evolve. It evolves with the input from our residents. One of the things that we outset with the board and everybody else in doing this was maintaining our grounds, maintaining our arboretum on our campus, and also our legacy buildings. But we've taken a lot of input from the community, from these last several years of going through this process. As many of you know, we started this process back in 2018, so you'll see that in this plan, we've gone ahead and looked at, you know, areas of least impact in trying to preserve those view corridors based on that feedback. We feel these changes will strengthen the Osborne to meet the needs of current and future residents and help maintain the Osborne for many years to come. And then, just one last item of note, the Osborne has established a website, and I just want everybody to know this. It's reimaginetheosborne.org. It has a lot of information about this project, frequently asked questions that you can go to, click on, go through. It also provides for actual clicks to get to the city's website to get access to the plans as well. So, we thought it was important to make that known to the community here tonight. So, I'm going to turn it back over to Steve Rabel. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I'll keep my portion fairly brief, just to give a little bit of background for the public, as this is our first public hearing. We're located in the R2-1 family zoning district. The property's about 55.9 acres in size, and the subject use is an R2 senior living facility, which is a fairly newly created use. As the commission will recall, we went through approximately four years of zoning amendment process with the commission, the city council, the city staff, our own consultants, to establish that new, new R2 senior living use. Prior to that, there wasn't really a formal framework in the zoning. So, what was adopted back in 2022 established pretty robust zoning restrictions for the use that touched on things from the use itself and who's allowed to live in this kind of facility, to setbacks, landscaping, height requirements, all of these with input from the city. So, what you're going to see here is the result of roughly a year and a half of planning following the establishment of that framework. This is just to give you existing conditions overlay for the site. And what you'll see is not only is the proposed site plan compliant with zoning, in many instances, it exceeds the zoning requirements that were established by the city. And you'll see that the Osborne and its consultants have taken to heart a lot of the comments that we did receive during that zoning process. You know, rather than looking at development further south, or where some of the existing cottages are, as Matt noted, you'll see the proposed development is really focused more towards the central area of the campus, which does benefit the residents from a mobility standpoint, but also keeps some of the development away from the more residential areas abutting the campus, as well as the Osborne School. So, with that, I'd just like to leave with one other thought, is we recognize this is our first public hearing, and we also recognize that we're probably going to be getting questions and comments from the commission, as well as the public, and we expect this to be an iterative process going forward. So, we're looking forward to working with all of you. And now, I'll turn it over to Andy Tung, who will walk you through the proposed site plans.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, members of public. So, Steve mentioned, this is the Osborne campus as it is today, just over 55 acres. And as Matt described, there are basically two building groups that I'm going to talk about. The one, the original buildings, the older buildings on campus began in 1908 with the Osborne Building in the center of the campus. That's where you pull up today at the entry circle. It's flanked by two buildings, the Sterling Building and the Strathcona Building of the same vintage, and that initial core, we call the SOS group. The Pathway 2000 buildings that were constructed, approved in the late 1990s and completed in the early 2000s consist of a dedicated skilled nursing building, that's to the east of the SOS buildings. That's down here at the bottom of the page on the slide. Three independent living unit buildings that form their own three-sided courtyard, and they have structured parking below the buildings for those residents and some staff. And then, as Steve mentioned, a series of garden homes or duplex cottages at the south end of the site. Those are two attached within the area closest to the residential neighborhoods to the south and the east, as well as the Osborne School directly to the south. There are today three access points from the public streets to the Osborne campus. The main access is on Theol Road. There's a gatehouse there at the north end, and there are two secondary entrances that are gated but not manned, one further south on Theol and one at the intersection on the east side of the campus, intersection of Post Road and Old Post Road. Within the campus, these are private streets, network of roadway, generally a loop system that provides access to the, all the buildings, to the parking areas, both structured and surface. The new buildings, which Steve mentioned, have been worked on for the past 18 months since the adoption of the new zoning for senior living facilities within the R2 district, is fully compliant within, with those regulations in the district, including building setback, building height, building coverage, building FAR, site coverage, and required parking. FAR specifically, the city council created a maximum FAR for the site of .43, and the proposed development will have a, an FAR of .38, so somewhat under the .43 permitted. Steve mentioned that there is included in this application a steep slope permit application. There are three areas of steep slope within the campus that are proposed to be affected. Two of those occur currently within two of the stormwater basins on the site, one at the southwest corner and one at the northeast corner along Post Road. Those are the embankments at the side of the basin that form the volume that's held within the basin. The third area of steep slope is along the large entry circle at the front of the site, the grass bank between that entry circle and the parking adjacent. And as I will describe, that area will be covered by a proposed building. Steve also mentioned that the Osborne focuses its attention to the areas within the center of the campus, so only about 31% of the campus area, or 55-plus acres, is proposed to be affected by this proposed development, both in terms of keeping the disturbance compact and also working to improve the proximity of the new improvements to the existing buildings so that they work together functionally and physically, so that many things about the campus, as viewed from the outside, will remain the same. For instance, the cottages at the south end of the site, they will all remain in place as is. And the activity, as you see here on this slide, the new buildings have red numbers in them. There are two areas of new buildings, one in the center of the site here, and the second at the north end of the site to the right. I'll start with the ones in the center. Here, the goal was to both relate physically and operationally, functionally, to the adjoining buildings. So, the new buildings in the center of the site include a fourth independent living wing that squares off the quadrangle created by the first three, built in the Pathway 2000, a small, one-story amenity building that will have common, common areas for residents that serves to create one side of a smaller quadrangle here, and also the fourth side of the quadrangle, the larger courtyard, the central courtyard created by the first three buildings, the SOS buildings. Completing that square, if you will, are some duplex cottages that transition to the existing cottages here, as well as a hybrid building along the eastern face of the, that quadrangle. And Carolyn will describe the specifics of those buildings, particularly this hybrid building, when she gets up in a moment. The buildings to the north, north being to the right of the slide, work off the existing Osborne Building, flanking a new accessible entrance pavilion at the center. Right at the front of the building will be two independent living unit wings and a new assisted living building that Matt mentioned. And below, all of the independent living wings here on the northern portion, and also in the center of the site, the fourth building in this quadrangle will be below-grade parking, one level of below-grade parking, such that that will be for residents and for staff. So, all of the independent living buildings that are being constructed will have either below-grade or within-building parking. As a result of this creation of the underground parking or the below-grade parking, there will be, in fact, 68 surface spaces that exist on the site today, net 68 spaces removed, leaving more room for care and residence buildings, as well as landscape areas. In terms of utility infrastructure, this diagram is a little bit difficult to see, but it shows the underground utilities that will serve the new buildings and also continue to serve the existing campus. It has been designed, the infrastructure improvements have been designed so that none of the existing connections for utilities to the street, that is, to the surrounding streets, including sanitary, water supply, and stormwater, will be changed. So, those street connections will remain as is, and the new connections or the improvements will be done within the campus, within that private system. Because of the Osborne's situation, it sits at a localized high point within the City of Rye. As it had been built up over time to this point, there were, there are connections to three different sewer lines, city sewer lines from the Osbornes, goes to the high point. So, there's sewer connections to the south, to the east, and to the northeast. At the time of the zoning amendment, there was a city sewer study undertaken, and as a result of that study, we learned, along with the city, that some of the systems are less healthy than others. That is, in terms of their capacity, in terms of the receiving treatment plant's capacity, and in terms of the amount of leakage or inflow and infiltration that occurs within the system today. The study outlined improvements that could be done to help relieve that condition. And in the redesign of the sewer system on the site here, we have determined and proposed that 45,700 gallons per day of daily sewage flow that currently goes to the Post Road and the Son Drive System, and goes from there to the Blind Brook Waste Water Treatment Plant, will be rerouted to a system that is less challenged than the Son Drive System. So, that will relieve some of the city's issues with inflow and infiltration, especially during heavy storm events. There will be an additional 22,000 gallons per day of flow from the new buildings. That, with the 45,000 gallons that is rerouted, will be directed to the south, to the system that is currently in Osborne Road, and goes to the Mamaroneck Waste Water Treatment Plant. In terms of the stormwater improvements, there will be additional impervious areas created. There are currently three primary stormwater basins on the site, one at Southwest Corner, near Osborne and Theol, and two along the east side of the site, along the Post Road. Two of those basins will be, will have their capacity increased by broadening the bottom of the basin, not touching the outer upper rim, so that the vegetation around the upper rim and its footprint will remain the same. But by broadening the bottom of the basin, we're able to increase the volume capacity of the basin in the southwest by 20%, and the one at the northeast by 40%. There will also be a number of underground infiltration systems below two of the parking lots at the north end to provide additional storage and treatment. We know that during the Ida storm back in 2023, that there was an instance after a very heavy rain, when some of the, or at least one of the surface swales that directs surface runoff to the basin at the southwest corner overflowed. After that happened, and what happened then is that the off-site runoff, onsite runoff, instead of going within the swale to the basin, over top the edge of the swale, where it was weakened, and it flowed over the stone wall along Theol Drive, not at the basin, but uphill of the basin, if you will, further north. And that went onto the sidewalk and then into Theol Road. Following the storm, and in 2024, we have examined that situation. We've redesigned and re-engineered those swales and channels, the surface channels, so that they are better able to carry a storm, even of the extent that Ida was. And that becomes now a standard maintenance practice, as it ought to be for all maintenance, all stormwater facilities within the city. Just to return here again, as I mentioned, there are three existing driveways. There are no changes proposed to the existing driveways. They will continue to function the way that they do today, except during the construction process, the driveway at the eastern side of the site, at Post Road and Old Post Road, will be not used for occasional staff and resident gated or clicker-controlled access, as it is today, but it will be closed off for that use and only used for emergency access. So, the, all construction traffic will go in and out the main entrance at the north end of Theol Road. The Post Road entry will only be used for emergency access. Residents and staff will go in the main entrance, as well as the other entrance on Theol. During July of this year, Hardesty in Hanover, our traffic engineer, conducted a third evaluation of proposed traffic from these improvements, building on the work they did in 2021 and 2022 during the zoning amendment process. They studied the intersections directly around the site, and not surprisingly, found that the primary traffic issue in the area is really centered around the Osborne School at the south end of the campus. They're drop-off in the morning and pickup times in the afternoon, when they have both buses and parents picking up and dropping off students. Based on the proposed number of additional residences, there are 108 new, net new senior residences proposed as part of this plan. That consists of 128 new independent living units and 20 fewer assisted living units. As Matt mentioned, part of the program is to rebalance the mix of independent living and healthcare units, healthcare meaning assisted living and skilled nursing, such that the independents can, as they do today, they stay longer in their own apartments than they used to, say, 25 years ago, and spend less time in the two higher levels of care. And so, that number is to be rebalanced. But with the, those new, net new 108 residences, our traffic consultant calculated, based on that number of units, which includes both residents and staff, factored into the number of trips, that the number of trips resulting from those units were, included 22, 31, and 27 trips during the three peak hours that were determined during the day. That would be morning, afternoon school pickup, and evening rush. So, 22 in the morning, 31 in the midday, and 27 at the trip end, at the end of the day, during the rush, evening rush. That would work out to approximately three trips, based on current traffic patterns, at any peak hour being added to traffic in the Osborne Road area near the pickup activities and drop-off activities. And our consultant believes that that would not result in any measurable increase in delays or changes in level of service along any of those roadways or those intersections. The proposed construction process for these two sets of building groups and the infrastructure changes within the campus, that is, both the parking, the roadways, and the utilities, is anticipated to take up to, between four to five years in total duration. The work is proposed to be started at the center of the campus, with the four building groups here, at the south end of the lawn, and then move, as that work is done and begins to come out of the ground, move to the north, to the areas north of the existing Osborne Building. Major excavation on the site, primary excavation, will be related to the creation of the underground garages. And based on the test borings that have been taken at the site, we don't anticipate there'll be any rock removal required to create the space for those garages. All construction parking will be related, will be located either on the site or remote lots, with those workers being shuttled back and forth to the site. And there will be no construction parking on public streets. All construction traffic, as I mentioned, would enter and exit at the main driveway. And this is a map of the larger area. I apologize, the orientation has been shifted so that north is to the top right. That yellow circle is the main entry point at the Osborne, where the gatehouse is, and all construction traffic would leave and enter at that point. And the yellow mark is showing how construction traffic would leave the site to get on the Playland Access Road, and then the Playland Parkway. And conversely, the green dashed line shows how construction traffic would arrive to the site, along Playland Parkway, to the Access Road, and along Theol Road to the main entry. So, none of the traffic would be routed towards Osborne Road. Next, I'd like to hand it over to Robert Goldie to describe the proposed landscape treatment.
Thanks, Andy, for the record. Robert Goldie, principal with Towers Goldie Landscape Architects. The Osborne reveres its tree canopy, its pastoral landscape. The intent is to maintain that character throughout this project. There are over, or...
Sorry, I'm supposed to change that.
There are just under a thousand trees existing on the site, and we know that because the Osborne has had a long relationship with an arborist firm that's been continually doing work on their campus. They have catalogued essentially every tree on campus, they have assessed the condition of these trees and indicated the size of them, and that catalog is part of the submittal of the site plan drawings. In addition to cataloguing all of the trees on the drawings, there's an indication of which trees are subject to the city's tree ordinance. And of the impacted trees for this project, ninety-four of the trees will fall under the guise of the tree ordinance. The vast majority of these impacted trees are in the very center of the campus, as Andy indicated, where the development will be. And that will leave the perimeter essentially, for the most part, untouched, so the existing plant canopy around the perimeter of the site will essentially remain as is, and it'll actually be reinforced by additional landscaping. Of these impacted trees, approximately fifty have been identified by the arborist as being in fair, poor, or critical condition. And as you can imagine, having a campus of over, almost a thousand trees, these trees range tremendously in size. They range from trees that were planted with the initial Osborne home construction all the way to trees that were planted as recently as last fall. So it's quite a variety of sizes and obviously a variety of species. I think you all know that the Osborne has achieved its status, certified arboretum status, and part of the objective of this project is to definitely maintain that and to actually improve the quality of their arboretum trees. Again, of the impacted trees, fifty, approximately fifty have been identified as potentially being transplantable, and the Osborne, and we have been working with a tree mover to assess the feasibility of using some of their existing plant stock and transplanting them elsewhere so that, you know, we maintain the quality of those trees. So looking at the impacted trees, the ninety-four impacted trees, if you use the city's tree replacement requirement formula, that would require a hundred and seven trees of a minimum two-inch caliper. The planting plan that we proposed proposes a commitment to plant two-hundred-and-thirty trees of a minimum of three to three-and-a-half inch caliper. So in essence, we're proposing to plant more than double the requirement of trees that are minimally fifty percent larger than the minimum requirement. That's in addition to looking at transplanting existing trees that are feasible to transplant. So the plant list that we've developed takes in mind a number of things. It looks to maintain a largely native plant palette, but knowing that this is an arboretum, we have looked to ensure that any trees that are required to be removed that are unique in species, that they either exist elsewhere on the campus and are in good health, or we've added them to the plant list for the proposed trees. We've also increased, we've proposed additional species that don't exist on the campus today to increase the variety. In total, when all this work, proposed work is completed, there will be at least fifty more trees existing on the campus than exist today. And importantly, as I mentioned, the Osborne will maintain its status as a certified arboretum. And now I'll hand it over to Carolyn.
Good evening, everyone. Caroline Levens with Byer Blinderbell Architects. I'm going to speak a little bit about the architecture, the building forms, and some of the view sheds that we've kept in mind. A little louder? Okay.
You tried pointing the mic a little bit.
Sure.
Yeah, there you go. Maybe that works.
So I'm going to speak this evening about the architecture, building forms, and some of the view sheds that we've kept in mind in the planning analysis. So starting at the north side of the site up here, Buildings One and Three will all be four stories in height. Buildings One are the new proposed independent living wings. Building Three is the proposed assisted living building. We've been thoughtful about these building heights, which are all underneath the maximum zoning required height in order to maintain the view sheds of the existing Osborne wing and be thoughtful about the existing view shed of the tower and the roof. Moving to the south side of the site, the tallest building on site will be Building Seven, which will be the proposed independent living building wing, we're referring to it as Building Six Thousand. That building will be five stories in height, which again is within the zoning maximum stories and height allowed. That building will be no taller than the existing Two Thousand, Three Thousand, and Four Thousand buildings here in order to maintain a cohesive reading of all of the structures here. And lastly, Buildings Eight, Nine, and Ten, which are on the south side of the site here, are the lowest in building height, and that has been on purpose in order to think about the existing view shed from Old Post and Boston Post Roads of the historic Osborne Wing and the historic tower view shed. So this central building here, which is proposed to be an amenity building, will actually only be one story in height at grade. The rest of the program of that building will be below grade. That is on purpose in order to maintain the view shed of the historic South Lawn, which is here. Moving over to the cottages over here, these will actually only be two stories in height. And lastly, Building Ten, which is the proposed hybrid building here, is well under the proposed, sorry, the required maximum height. There is a significant change in topography here, and so what we've done is we've been thoughtful about burying the garage below grade. Part of that garage entry will be at grade, the rest of it will be below grade, and then there are three stories of residential above that. This south side of the site has been thought out in order, again, to maintain the view shed of the existing Osborne building. So next, this is a slide showing you some of the different vantage points that we've taken, starting to look at some architectural renderings of the campus. The design of these buildings is still in flux, but we wanted to give you a little bit of an idea of some of the materiality, the building forms, and a better understanding of the building heights of the proposed buildings. So starting up here on the top left, this is standing at the cottages, looking towards the Osborne Wing, really thinking about maintaining the view shed of the existing towers, and you can see that Building Seven, that five-story building over here. One of the moves that we're making with these new proposed buildings not only has to do with their total height, but how we treat the top floor. And so, for instance, in this Building Six Thousand, which is referred to as Building Seven in the site plan submission, is significantly set back so that it really reads more like a four-story building instead of a five-story. This image over here is as you come into the campus. This is one of the new independent living buildings, which is referred to as Building One. As you can see, we're maintaining that roof line of the existing Osborne Wing. Also, the siding of those buildings is on purpose in order to maintain the historic reading and the symmetry of the Osborne facade from the north side. Down here, you can see an image of some of the proposed two-story cottages looking towards that new Building Six Thousand. As you can see, a theme throughout these various buildings has to do with the variation in texture and materiality, trying to think, be in keeping with the existing campus, and also create some identity for the various independent living building types. This is a view, if you're coming in even further in towards the Osborne Wing, with one of the independent living, independent living buildings coming off of that existing Osborne Wing. Another move that we're making is thinking about the existing stone of the Osborne Wing and bringing that into the materiality and the base of this building. Lastly, on the bottom left, this is an image of the proposed Building Ten, which gives you a better understanding of the topography and how some of the garage will be completely buried and some will be up grade. We've been very thoughtful about this building, its materiality, its building form, again, making a different move on this fourth floor in order to make it read less like a three-story building, but more like a two. And in addition, for the building forms, we're trying to make it read as two separate buildings with a reveal in the middle so that from the street, there's a clear reading of that from a more residential scale. And lastly, on the bottom right, we have the proposed assisted living building, which is in keeping with the historic red brick of the Osborne Building. Next, I'm going to take you through a couple of view shed studies that we've done on site. You're going to see three images in a row. The first one will be an image of the existing condition, the next will be a wintertime condition, and the next will be a summer. One thing I wanted to point out in these images is we've been very thoughtful to take the landscape plan and be accurate in showing which trees are proposed to be removed and which trees are proposed to be added, and those are showing roughly a four- to five-year maturity in terms of those new trees that we will be showing. So this first image here on the legend is a view from Boston Post Road and Old Post Road right here at the Y, so this is showing that existing access point here into the Osborne Building. This next image is showing that same vantage point incorporating the proposed buildings. You can see that Building Ten here in the foreground as well as some of those two-story cottages. You can also see an accurate depiction of some of the trees being removed as well as the perimeter trees that Bob alluded to earlier that will be added to the site. And next, this is the summertime condition, so as you can see, a lot of those perimeter trees are going to do a wonderful job of shielding some of that building form in order to try to maintain as much as we can the view shed as it is today. This next image is a view from Old Post Road, a little further down the road, you can see the key plan down here, apologies for the size. So this again is the existing condition. This next is in a wintertime condition. You can see the incorporation of Building Ten over here, an accurate depiction of the removal of the trees, but the addition of some of those new perimeter trees. And then next, that same vantage point in a summertime condition, as you can see, those perimeter trees are doing a nice job of shielding some of that new building form. And the last view is farther down at Packard Court. Again, you can see the historic tower here of the Osborne Building. This is showing that condition with the new proposed Building Ten. One of the things I wanted to point out here is we've been very thoughtful about the building form and trying to make it read as two separate building forms and not as one long form, again, a reading of a two-story, bringing back that fourth story. And then we're going to end here on the summertime view, that same condition where you can see that summertime perimeter tree screening of Building Ten, still maintaining the view shed of the historic Osborne Tower. Thank you, everyone, for your time. That's the last slide, I'll give it back to Steve.
Thank you. So now that you've all heard from our team, certainly if the commission has any questions for us, anything you'd like us to address in greater detail, we'd be happy to respond if we can tonight or in writing subsequently if needed, or if you'd like to open it up to public hearing, we very much enjoy hearing from the community.
Okay, so first question is, I guess, for the entire team. City of Rise consultant has reviewed the plans, the Bella, and has provided eighty-three questions. Assuming that we will continue this hearing and have the next one on October fourteenth, will you be able to answer all those questions before that time?
You know, I can tell you that our team is currently working on those responses. Some of them are requests for additional details on the drawings, some of them are a little bit more substantive. I would say, in the interest of preserving the possibility to move this forward, I think we will do everything in our power to address them between now and October. I can't, I don't want to stand here and make a certain guarantee of it.
All right, well, it's five weeks. Okay, so Mr. Tong, a couple of specific questions for you. The drainage swale you mentioned, did that get repaired? Is that functioning properly according to your calculations at this point?
Yes, it has been since 2024, since last year.
Okay, and when you did the traffic studies, did you do, maybe this is to Matt, I don't know, did you do a questionnaire to the staff and understand how many people of the staff come in their own cars versus public transportation?
I think they have a sense of that.
Yeah, we have a sense, so just to the commission, you may or may not know this, but we have a regular vehicle that goes down to the train station, picks up a fair number of our staff. I don't have the exact number, I can tell you that it's, it is a good percentage that take public transportation on the train, brought up by that bus. The bus is obviously caught within Hardesty and Hanover's numbers, and then other people that do not take that bus service actually physically walk. The primary staff that work at our campus that do drive come off, there, a lot of them are from down south in the Bronx area or north, they take the I-95 corridor, exit often on the Playland Access and come up Theol Road from there. If you'd like us to do a survey to find out the exact number, it could vary each and every day, but it is, it is a number.
Didn't you volunteer? Yes, we would. The last question I had really was, in your, in the La Bella questions, they refer to there not being borings, a boring log. So have you actually done test pits for determining depth and location of rock?
We have. Those were submitted to the commission, I think, in our third submission, so La Bella may not have received that. We'll make sure they get copies of that.
Anyone else on the commission have questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to ask people in the public who wish to speak to come up, please state your name and address, and we don't, unlike the city council, we don't have a three-minute clock, but if you start repeating yourself, I will ask you to sit down. So whoever wants to come up, please come up.
Hello, Sharri Punyan, Eighty-One Glen Oaks Drive, and I'm wondering, it may be that many of the questions that your person asked will be repeated in the few questions I have, and a lot of mine were around the traffic because the traffic's, it seemed low, because I know, you can see, I've looked at the Osborne, I've looked at a lot of other places, my parents now live in an independent living community, and I was aware that this is a pretty big independent community that already is going to add another entire independent living community. And I looked up just a little bit of some of the local ones that have been recently built. The Bright View has fifty to seventy-five units of independent, thirty to fifty units of assisted, and sixteen to thirty of memory care. And it's, I looked this up online, so I'm not a hundred percent sure that all these numbers are completely accurate, it's what I could find. It was not easy to find this information. It was not easy to find this information. The Waterstone of Westchester has 132 units total. The Broadview has 220 units. The Atria has 166 units. The Waterstone in High Ridge where my parents are has 146 units. And the residence Summer Street has 104 units. And that's, those are some of the places we've looked at. So when we're talking about this addition, it's not a minor addition. It's essentially adding an entire new independent living community on top of what's there. And so when we talk about the traffic, I'm thinking, you know, we have the drivers, the independent living drivers, but how much additional staff? The apartments are cleaned once a week. Any additional dining staff has to be included. If it's anything like my parents, people like to try to age in place and they can't really, so you end up with a lot of private aides who come in. Like, a lot of the parents, the units of my parents are using private aides. And especially if you're taking away the assisted living, you're going to add a lot of additional pressure to have private aides come in at all hours of the day and night to take care of people. And my other question, though, was also, what are they going to do with the existing buildings? Are these 120, they talk about redoing the existing buildings, but the way that the finances work when you buy into the Osborne is...
I'm sorry, which existing buildings are you talking about?
The...
Steve, can you adjust the map?
Yeah, yeah. So when we're saying we're going to add a bunch of new independent living, and then they'll be able to do things with the, and restructure and reuse the existing buildings, I'm assuming they're not going to remove any independent living that exists now because...
That is what they have said, yes.
Yes. Okay. I wanted to confirm that because you buy the apartment and it's, I'm not sure how they're going to do a lot of restructure, of work within the buildings because people own those units and they can't get their money back unless those units are resold.
I believe, and Matt, you can correct me, but what he said was that they were trying to move from 52% independent to 70% in the long run, not necessarily right away, that they're going to have a net of 108. So they're building 128 new independent and losing 20 healthcare.
Right.
So that's what's on the table.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So that was really, the bulk of my question was to point out that this is big and to put a lot of questions on their traffic based on that. And the number of other, of staff, I think, is much higher than they may be taking into account.
Wanted to do a survey of their staff.
Yep. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on the application?
My name's Bill Pearson. I live at 3 Holly Lane. We've lived there for 34 years. Just a very simple comment statement. I'm very strongly in favor of the proposal by the Osborne. I think it's crucial for the viability of the Osborne and also crucial for the community of Rye. The Osborne is an important part of Rye, and for the Osborne to be a viable part of Rye in the future, this project needs to occur. So I'm very strongly in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on the application?
Thank you. My name is Mary Ann Haynes. I live at 2 Coolidge Avenue, which is across the intersection of Osborne, Thiel, and Coolidge to the southwest of the Osborne. Thank you to the Planning Commission for opening the public hearing tonight in an in-person format. As many of us will remember, the entirety of the public hearing that was conducted on the zoning text amendment was done over Zoom. At that time, members of the public struggled with access and with being heard. We appreciate the opportunity to be in the same room as the Osborne's many representatives and the chance for hopefully meaningful discourse. I share many concerns with my neighbors, and I would like to touch on a number of our concerns tonight, particularly for those who could not be here. Traffic congestion and pedestrian safety are often top of mind living where we do. Coolidge is a cut-through for many who don't obey the stop signs or crosswalks. The traffic studies that have been conducted by the Osborne to date have focused on traffic around the Osborne School, but that is only one piece of the puzzle. There have been no less than three major traffic accidents on my corner alone in the last four years. It was mentioned by the Osborne's team that the most recent traffic study on Thiel Road built upon previous studies, which we know to be flawed. The first one was done during the pandemic when the school was at one-half capacity and on a one-hour delay. The second one involved recording equipment that was placed on Osborne Road in such a location that missed every car traveling westbound that entered and exited the Osborne School driveway. In addition to that, the equipment was broken and not properly recording for at least a portion of the study. Forgive me if I do not have great faith in this traffic analysis.
What's the approximate date on this, did you say?
I can look it up.
Uh, roughly?
I don't recall. It was during the second traffic study that was done by the Osborne. That recording equipment was between the entrance and exit driveways of the Osborne School. So every car that came from the intersection at Boston Post Road and Osborne and entered the school driveway and exited the school driveway was not accounted for. Where are the traffic studies that look at Old Post and Boston Post Roads? We all know that these are also several, backed up several times of the day when traffic, with traffic. The Osborne is proposing that all emergency vehicles use their Old Post entrance, which is actually currently closed to traffic. Has there been a traffic study that has looked at the feasibility of this and how it might impact response times to the Osborne? The county has also brought forth that Boston Post Road is a state route and that Old Post Road is a county road. Have the applicable agencies been notified and had the opportunity to weigh in? There are multiple areas of concern around this huge property, not just the addition of three cars at peak hours, which may require action by the Transportation, Pedestrian and Safety Committee in advance of any construction vehicles hitting the streets, including amending parking rules on Thiel Road and Osborne Road, consideration of the intersection at Playland Access and Playland Parkway, as well as enforcement by Rye PD. Concerns about pedestrian safety on Thiel Road and Osborne Road persist. Westchester County has recommended that the Osborne extend their sidewalk, and I will note that they've only recently updated the one on Boston Post to be ADA compliant, the length of Thiel Road to facilitate the use of B-line buses on Theodore and Fremd Avenue and access to West Med. It is important not to lose sight of the fact that the Osborne to date has served varying levels of care from independent living up to including skilled nursing focusing on the elderly. However, the redevelopment is being billed as a 55-plus community. Regardless of the current age of residents at the Osborne, if the population skews younger in the future, this will presumably increase the traffic generated by the site. What parameters were used in the traffic study to account for a younger population who may still be working, commuting, leading more outward-focused lives? One can only assume that this anticipated increase in younger residents is why there was a projected need for 685 parking spots. Has the county's suggestion of determining the actual need for an excess of 310 parking spaces been examined using the available toolkits? And if so, what was the outcome? Let's turn now to sewage. The Osborne is currently connected to both the Blind Brook or Disbro and Mamaroneck Waste Treatment Facilities. It is proposed that there will be a rerouting within the campus to send a majority of the 80,000 gallons of waste down the Osborne Road line to Mamaroneck, which they tell us, based on their study, has an additional capacity to handle this. While the Rye City, City of Rye has recently replaced numerous sewer pipes to be in compliance with their legal settlement of Save the Sound, it is my understanding that the city has not yet produced a plan for waste management oversight as is required by that same settlement. How can we, as homeowners who live along this sewage line, be certain that there is in fact adequate capacity and that this will be monitored to avoid sewage from backing up into our homes as it has done to that of our neighbors in Rye Gardens? Has, as the county suggested, the city implemented a plan to inspect the sewer laterals in the areas connected to these mains to ensure that there are no leaks or illegal connections? Our community is also very concerned about tree removal as their contribution is not only to visuals but also their impact on water flows. The Osborne intends to remove 177 mature trees and replant trees that will be of a three-and-a-half-inch caliber.
Okay. So, hey, Matt, that's not right. You heard him. So please make sure you get the numbers right.
177 is what they are proposing to remove.
A three-inch caliber tree is not a mature tree.
No, that's what they're, a three-and-a-half inches is what they're proposing to replant, sir.
Okay. You need to look at the tree plan because many, many of those trees are quite small. They're one to seven inches. So those are not regulated by the city.
But many of them are.
You can't, you can't say they're mature trees.
There are 177 trees that are slated to be removed. Many of them are mature trees.
Okay, that's correct.
Thank you. It has been acknowledged by the Osborne's team that they sit atop a high point in Rye. How does the removal of 177 trees and replacement with smaller ones affect the water runoff from the site? Where is a study that quantifies the contribution of these trees to water uptake and how that will be impacted by these proposed changes? All renderings of the site provided by the Osborne reflect four to five years of growth. How will the construction phase be screened? When will the new trees be planted? In advance? After four years of construction? All of this brings me to our greatest concern, flooding, as all water runs downhill. In response to community concern, Mr. Miller has repeatedly stated that the Osborne submitted plans vary greatly from the diagram that was produced during the zoning process. Although we applaud the Osborne for responding to community concern on this one point and moving their planned redevelopment in the, to the northern aspect of their campus, the decision perhaps had more to do with the Article 78 that was filed and settled, further restricting building heights, increasing setbacks, and preserving green space. To Mr. Miller's point, the public always understood that the schematic was theoretical, but here we are presented with the possible, two and a half acres. That's the equivalent of 57 tennis courts of additional impervious surface on the second highest point in Rye. Information has been presented by the Osborne that two of the retention ponds on the site will be increased in breadth by 20% and 40% respectively to accommodate additional runoff. However, stormwater is not contained now, as has been evidenced during many rainstorms, not during, just during Hurricane Ida. I'm going to show you a video, and it may be the event that Mr. Tong referred to earlier, when a swale malfunctioned or failed, although the dates don't align with what he indicated. But I do have other videos showing multiple times when there is water coming under and over the wall at the Osborne property. This is along Thiel Road.
Mary Ann, when was that? What's the date on that video?
Uh, it's summer of '22, but I don't recall the exact date. I have, do have, I do have other videos of later dates that show water, not as dramatic, but coming under and over the wall. So what studies have been done to ensure that the proposed stormwater management will actually be adequate? Have these accounted for the fact that they are currently inadequate? Westchester County pointed out in their letter that current, that underground stormwater management methods can diminish in efficacy over time if not properly cleaned and maintained. An enforceable maintenance program was recommended. Has this been developed and adopted? I'm going to preface my final comments this evening by stating that I am not a lawyer. I have, however, learned a great deal about New York State law in the past few years as this proposed project has been discussed. My understanding is that under New York State Law Part 617, the State Equality, State Environmental Quality Review Act, the Osborne has submitted Part 1 of the EAF and that you, the Planning Commission, have designated yourselves as the lead agent. Failing any opposition by other agencies by September 30th, it is our sincere hope that you will take this grave responsibility seriously. Do your due diligence and respect the law. Having already properly designated this proposed project as a Type 1 action, there is the presumption that an environmental impact statement or an EIS will be required of the Osborne at their expense with outside independent consultants and with the requisite community input. I present you here with a position, a petition tonight, nearly 100 people. Signatures are still growing. But currently has, has nearly 100 signatories to the following statement. I have concerns about the environmental impact of the Osborne redevelopment plan. I petition the Rye Planning Commission to issue, issue a positive declaration for this project under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, SECR, and thereby require the Osborne to complete an environmental impact statement with community input on this massive redevelopment. I'd also just, for the public record, like to state a couple of points. At the last Planning Commission meeting, you were notified that this hearing is in direct conflict with the first Rye City School District Board of Ed meeting of the academic year with the new superintendent. There are many parents of children at the Osborne School who wanted to be here tonight and asked me to reflect their concerns. You were also informed that due to the fact that all three of the meetings at which the Osborne presented occurred at the end of the school year or during the summer months when many were away or otherwise occupied, it was requested that any public hearing be delayed until at least October to allow members of the public to familiarize themselves with the documentation provided by the Osborne to digest this information and to formulate questions. This request was denied despite the fact that the zoning text amendment process, the Osborne or the city council postponed the public hearing no less than 24 times to the detriment of the public. A fellow resident also pointed out that this public hearing and any decisions that ultimately come from it may be in violation of the New York State Open Meetings Law and subject to dismissal. The minutes of your meetings on June 24th and July 15th were only made available to the public yesterday morning. Additionally, June omits all reference to the Osborne's presentation and subsequent discussion, and the minutes for August are not yet posted. I understand that you were informed of their absence more than one occasion prior to yesterday. The final procedural note I will make is that this public hearing, though it was duly noticed by print ad, signage, and certified mailings, affects the entire City of Rye. Greater efforts should have been required and taken to ensure that any individual who might have a concern about this massive redevelopment was informed. In fact, certified mailings were only sent to any property owner within 500 feet of the Osborne, whereas SECR clearly recommends a minimum of 1,000 feet in the suburban area. Is there some hidden agenda? There was a side letter that was referenced at the June 15th, 2022 city council meeting but not made available to the public. What was the quote-unquote "pretty big" offer from the Osborne to the city? Does that quote-unquote "offer of contribution" have any influence here? We, the members of the community, ask you, the Planning Commission, to independently review Part 1 of the EAF submitted by the Osborne. As lead agent, it is your responsibility to do so under SECR, considering not only the finished product but the protracted construction phase as well. Many questions remain regarding claims made by the Osborne, omissions, and factual inaccuracies. By way of example, question C2 asks if any municipally-adopted comprehensive plan makes specific recommendations for the site of the proposed redevelopment. The Osborne answered no. However, the City of Rye 1985 Development Plan, which is still the plan of record, because the city has only recently embarked on an updated plan, clearly states the level of development, which, based on their definitions, and if my math is correct, the Osborne currently exceeds and visuals intended for the Osborne property. Having seen the information presented here this evening, when you sit down with the workbook, just extensive, but it does exist, to complete Part 2 of the EAF, it is incomprehensible that you will not find even one area of the environment that might potentially be impacted by a development of this size and scope. In fact, when the city council finally reviewed the last iteration of the EAF, Mr. Miller agreed with Council Nathan, who was the only member of the city council who attempted to do his due diligence, that there was in fact more than one area that could rise to the level of potential moderate environmental impact. We implore you, members of the Planning Commission, do not do as the city council did and rubber-stamp this massive redevelopment project simply because it has been requested that you do so, or that it is zone-compliant, or that some studies look good or purported experts say that you should, or that the applicant has promised something in return. Please fulfill your mandate by considering the potential impact that a development, the largest that Rye has seen in a generation, might have on the City of Rye as a whole, its residents, including those who live at the Osborne and the environment. And then, after all of the independent studies have been conducted, reviewed, and vetted, if and only if any foreseeable environmental impacts can be either eliminated or mitigated, should this project be permitted to move forward. Thank you.
Quick second, let's hang some. Thank you for all that.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, sir.
Sure. And thank you for all your preparation, the time you've clearly put into it, and it's clear.
I don't know what this is. It's not mine.
Oh, that's awesome.
No, it's not, I have no idea what that is. Not mine.
All right. At one point, you mentioned something about June of 2022, a letter, a big offer... At one point, you mentioned something about June of 2022, a letter, a big offer. I'd like to know exactly what that was and what you're implying.
If you look at the video of the City Council meeting from June 15th of 2022 and you review the transcript, there is an offer, there is a note, a comment in the transcript between Mr. Miller and Mr. Nathan at the time when they are discussing a side letter, which was apparently presented, that they became aware of, and the direct quotes were "a big offer." I don't know what that was. I have no idea what it referred to. The public was not made aware of it.
Nor did I. I just thought it might have been germane to planning. Sorry. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else in the public wish to speak on the application? Hold on a second.
Good evening, Brian Turo at 25 Wilson Drive in the Glen Oaks neighborhood.
What's your name?
Brian Turo.
Okay, thank you.
And, and actually, I think something that I just heard makes a whole lot of sense to me along the lines of, I've lived here for five years now, and in that five years I've had two, three major flood events in our home, Enrique, Ida, and Ophelia. And with the scope of this project being five years, and my understanding of construction is usually smash first, build later, there is definitely rising concern about what will take place during the construction phase. I would like to know whether there's going to be any mitigation or resiliency efforts taken early in the phases of the construction to make sure that the members of the community are not then, you know, caught with additional floodwaters in that interim. Thank you very much.
Okay, I just, I believe that in the past, they've had to do their increased water retention systems first before they're allowed to start, so usually that is the first thing that happens.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry.
Good evening, my name is Georges Ugeux, U-G-E-U-X. I'm coming from Belgium. My family moved to Rye well before we thought about Osborne. And I would like to tell you that after having spent two years in rehabilitation and then assisted living, and now having recovered as an independent, I have had a huge experience of what Osborne brings to the people who are here. We are confronted, in a positive sense, with a project that cannot be underestimated. And I think it's true, it is a big project. But what I would like to tell you, this committee, that fundamentally, we are the first ones who have the points that have been raised at our heart, because we want our trees, we love our trees, we love our garden, we love our community. We don't want sewage, we don't want flooding, and we are very environmentally keen to even work as volunteers within our premises and taking care of the flowers and of the, of the, some trees and so on and so forth. The message is the following: I think we feel that being in Rye is a privilege. And what we believe also that for Rye, having a community like Osborne is also something that makes a lot of sense, because it is important that Rye can have also not just schools but also takes care of the elderly. The reason why we have come to the conclusion that what Matt Anderson has proposed to the residents' association was positive is because we recognize that having the land that we have and facing an increased need of a population that is not coming and in need of the kind of services that we offer and the kind of life that we live, that I think it wasn't making any sense for us to just confine ourselves to our cozy current structure. And we are totally behind what has been proposed, because we believe that it will also allow us to improve the current situation, because, believe it or not, we are sometimes, for some of our activities, a bit crowded. So space is important. So that's all I wanted to tell you.
Thank you.
My name is Abe Stenberg, and I live at the Osborne. I've been there for nine years, and I just want to tell you that it's not just a matter of increasing the number of independent living. It's right now, even though the Osborne is a terrific place, the, the facilities are not sufficient and adequate enough for what is required today. For example, we don't have, the, the fitness center is much too small and crowded. We have a swimming pool that is much too small to really do any kind of swimming in it. The, the dining rooms are far away from, not all of them, but two of them are far away from where most of the independent living is. And a lot of the independent living, even though we're independent, a lot of them use walkers or, or wheelchairs, and it's difficult for them to go far away. So we need dining facilities that are closer to where the independent living is. In general, there also, when we have meetings, some of the, the conference rooms that we have are much too small, and many times we even have to turn down people from attending the meetings because the, the conference room is, is not big enough. So it's very important for the viability of Osborne that this be done above and beyond trying to get more independent living in it. And I think it's important also, if I may be presumptuous enough, I think it's important for Rye that the Osborne be a viable institution, because I think it's good for the community, and I believe that we are one of the largest taxpayers in the, in, in, in here. And by doing this, we'll actually even be a larger taxpayer, but that's not really the point, but you should bear that in mind as well. And anyway, I think it's a very important thing that we, that we have to do, and I hope you all will agree with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does somebody have that photo? Anyone else wish to speak on the application?
You'll be next. Hi, Linda McKay, 10 Heritage Lane, member of Rye Sustainability Committee for 10 years. And I love the Osborne home. I volunteered there for three years with my dog. I want them to be successful, but I really want the council to take this so seriously for the impact environmentally that it may have on the surrounding community. And I'm glad you're going to have 84 questions, and I look forward to hearing the answers. And I just wanted to say, the underground parking garages can reduce and worsen underground flooding, depending on the design, and the impervious concrete structure beneath can obstruct the natural flow of groundwater and create a barrier effect. So proper design and drainage are critical to minimize flooding risks. So I just wanted to make that point. You're probably going to ask about that, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
My name is Abigail Gertz. I have moved into the Osborne in April 2018, which means I've been a resident of Rye for more than seven years. The planning for this has very much involved the residents. We have gotten to clear, to make our suggestions, and many, many of the amenities that are planned and the expansions are to serve the residents and future residents. That's all very nice, and it's important for us, but I think there's a larger picture, which is that the, this is the second time in the history, long history of the Osborne that it has recognized that it has to meet a challenge of major changes in demographics and in business competition. These additions and changes are meant to adjust, to address that issue. And it, we all have, the residents all have a vital investment in the Osborne, but so does the city of Rye. And I strongly believe that without these enlargements and improvements, the, the institution cannot thrive, and its, its success is vital to Rye as well as to the residents. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? The application? Okay, can I have a motion to leave the hearing open until October 14?
So moved. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, just relative to the work session, we're just going to do it right here. I think we've gone through what you need to do between now and then. Do you have any questions on that?
None from us.
Okay, thank you. Relative to the commission, you know, Christian has given us this twice now, this, the full environmental assessment form. And as noted, the applicant has completed Section 1. We need to do Sections 2 and 3. There is a workbook online you can look at, but we need, you need to really spend some time on this between now and our next meeting on this subject, which is not till October. Any questions on that?
So, so Nick, I, I was looking at that form before this meeting, and I have a couple areas of, of questions. Is that something that we should kind of filter through Christian?
I, I think it's going to be a topic of discussion the next meeting, but certainly we just want to reiterate, as studied by the public, but also for you folks to sort of dial in on some of those, those responses that are draft, and you're looking at them, and it's your responsibility.
Questions on Section 1? We should put all those together and then submit those to the applicant.
Okay.
If there are questions on 2 and 3, then those are things that we're going to deal with.
We'll discuss at the next meeting.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Can we, can we see the, the utility plan again, please? All right, so, we talked about this in the last meeting, but you're expanding the southern retention pond, and, and then you mentioned about the swale, which we heard, and then we also saw, obviously, a video about the wall, which I believe is, I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, but that video is near where that southern retention pond is, correct? And that part of the wall, was that where we were, I believe?
The wall runs along the southwest boundary, so.
So, I, I think it'd be helpful for me at least to understand more how the drainage works on that portion of the site and what the swale fail was a little bit, and how, and how that water is being routed to the larger detention. Is it all through pipes, or is it part of that swale system and how that's working? Because this diagram doesn't, I mean, I, there, doesn't.
No, this is a summary diagram.
No, I understand, I, I.
Yes, we can, we can explain that. It is, but briefly, it's a combination, as in, I believe, all of detention basins, it's a combination of piping and surface swales, because they are in grassed areas. So the grassed areas that are just above the basins will direct water through the surface swales or channels, and water that comes from a further distance away from the paved areas, for instance, in the cottages, would be piped, collected in those paved areas and piped. It's a combination.
It appears that maybe the swales near the wall there need to be examined a little further. I'm, I'm not sure if that video was pre, pre, pre-swale failure or post-swale failure, but that would be helpful to understand.
If I can get the date of that, I can, I can find that out.
Great.
Anything else for you to look into?
Christian, I have a question. So I, I appreciated receiving this independent review from our consultant. And, and I know we've talked about this privately, but I just wanted to say it publicly. The first several pages are really, if you don't have an engineering PhD, you can't make any hide nor tail of it. So I'm hoping that when you go through these 83 questions, you'll do your best in layperson language to explain this to the public, because it is the subject that everybody wants to talk about, which is the stormwater piece. So I just wanted to underscore that. And the traffic engineering review, I thought it was great, just to reiterate, that we look at all three entrances, and, so I just, I, I think that, that we heard loud and clear the traffic, and so I thought that was really helpful. But the first part, as much as you can do that in lay language for the, for the audience and our constituents, that would be really appreciated.
Of course.
And the last thing, actually, for you. CCAC submitted some comments, so you'll need to respond to those as well.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So just on the traffic point, so Nick asked you to survey the, the staff and, and make sure that you're taking into account all of their travel. But I think the, the members of the public raised some valid concerns about potential traffic impacts that may not be taken into account in the study, including aides who are not Osborne staff, is my guess. So I don't know if there's some sort of a census on, on what percentage of residents have, have a regular aide that comes on-site, but I think we do want to make sure we're taking into account that travel and traffic as well. I think also, you know, the, the, the recent resident just talked about some of the flaws in the underlying studies. I think it would be helpful if you went to your traffic engineer and make sure, give us confidence that they, that the updated study has addressed whatever those potential flaws were, or why those flaws aren't, are not in fact the flaws that have been pointed out in the past. And then, and then I, I think, just for, you know, to Jamie's former comment, previous comment, I think you might want to think about how to make this seem logical to us and to the public, that when you're talking about adding 120 new residents, you're talking about only three new trips, right? So I, I think explaining to us the assumptions that underlie why that you don't think that these new residents are going to have a big impact on traffic would help. And I know we've been through some of that during our conversations in the past, but I, I think trying to kind of be very, speak in plain English at the next meeting about why the traffic study is reliable and why you think there's not going to be much impact on traffic, at least in the intersections that are, matter most to the people in the community.
Yes, just in case there was a misunderstanding, I didn't say three, just three additional trips, but rather three additional trips in the area of the Osborne School.
I appreciate that, yes, yeah.
At peak hour, based on the existing routing of traffic in the area.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, any other questions? Thank you. We will now go to the conference room, and the item, and the first item will be 277 Locust Avenue. Thank you.
Coffee breaks is what we should have for today.